You are watching Access La Porte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the July 19th, 2023 meeting of the La Porte County Board of Commissioners. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot accesslaporte county dot org.
I'd like to call to order the La Porte County Commissioners Meeting Wednesday, July 19th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. If we could all stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, John Carr, if you could lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States of America under God, in this little liberty which we enjoy.
Deppler, give a packet for me.
Rule call.
Commissioner Haney.
Present.
Commissioner Rosinsky.
Present.
Commissioner Granarosa.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Consider agenda.
Thank you.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Consider approval of July 7th, 2023 minutes.
Motion to approve as presented.
We didn't, we didn't have those prepared yet. So we're just going to go ahead and approve those at the next meeting.
Oh, oh, the seventh.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
So, um, consideration of claims.
Commissioners, we have payroll for the period ending 7/7/23 in the amount of $1,480,699 and operating expense claims in the amount of $6,183,241.51.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Would that be for both the payroll ending and the expense claims?
For both.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 We'd like to open up to public comment. Go ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's John Carr. I'm the current president of the La Porte County Regional Sewer and Water District. And we've been working on a project to extend sewer and water to Hudson and Saucony Lake for the last year. And I'm joined here by our engineer, Ken Jones from JPR, and he'd kind of like to give a brief overview of the project.
Thank you. Nice to see you all.
Good evening.
We, uh, so we've been working diligently preparing this project to go to construction in 2024. And, uh, project has been, uh, been, been moving right along. And by the way, it started all the way back in 2013 where we were asked by the property owners to get involved with analyzing this. So it's, it's taken a while to get here. Um, I would, I would like to talk to you a little bit about, I know this is not on your agenda, but I'd like to consider the potential, the board would like you to consider the potential for a grant from your American Rescue Plan Act funds. Uh, we've, we've had some dialogue with the council on this. They haven't, we were, we were not there on an agenda item at their meeting. Um, so there was no formal request. And as you know, that request can't come from us. It has to come from the county commissioners to the council before, before anything, uh, concrete can happen. So the project right now budget is, uh, um, standing right at about $43 million. Pretty good size infrastructure project. Uh, doesn't matter what county you're in. That's a, that's a fairly significant investment. Um, the project will probably result in, uh, the, you know, the service to 1,113, um, residential and business users within Hudson and Saucony Lake communities. Uh, we've, we feel pretty comfortable at this point in time after, after, uh, you know, so many years of study and consideration that project is needed, um, uh, relative to how wastewater is being taken care of in that community right now. Very densely developed, as you know, if you're familiar with that area, water wells on top of septic systems and so on and so forth, and definitely could be well justified. Uh, we have made application to the state revolving loan fund, uh, the Indiana Finance Authority for, uh, loan funds. Uh, and we are, uh, we have scored two years now in the, uh, what we call the fundable range. So we're significantly up at the top of that list. So we're expecting to see some subsidization come from the IFA, uh, for the project. We've also have commitments that are, um, pending with USDA's rural development program. Both of those products will be long-term, low-interest loans. Uh, there will be, you know, uh, potential for subsidization, subsidization, subsidization from IFA or through SRF. We don't expect to see grant funds coming from, uh, the USDA. But, uh, even with that commitment and, uh, the long-term, low-interest loans, we still think that we are, uh, we have a gap to close, a significant gap to close. We think it's in the $9 million range. And when I say gap, what we're talking about is trying to deliver a, a reasonable rate to the property owners when the project is, uh, finally fully, uh, approved and going into construction. And, um, so every little bit helps. And, uh, and so what we're here to talk to you about today relative to your, to your ARPA funds is, um, we have had experience in other counties and specifically some that we've worked on. Uh, La Grange is one. And, uh, we're, for instance, where, where we were, one of the, one of the scoring criteria that's coming from, uh, SRF, uh, is, are, is, is there any ARPA funds being applied to the project? They consider that a leveraging move on behalf of, uh, the county within which the project is, is being administered. And, uh, in the case of, um, in the case of La Grange County, one and a half million dollars leveraged about five million from the, uh, SRF program and grant. So that is, they, they call it a forgivable loan, but it's really a grant. Um, I did a little bit of research before I came in tonight relative to other counties in, uh, northern Indiana that, um, that northern and central Indiana that have also dedicated funds to wastewater projects from their ARPA allocation. Elkhart County was the largest at 7.4 million. Hallen County was, uh, second at five million. That's, that's a fairly, fairly metropolitan county. So maybe, maybe you can't necessarily compare that with La Porte or even Elkhart for that matter. Wells at 1.6 Huntington at 975,000, Adams at 1.5 and La Grange at 1.2. And, uh, um, or 1.5, I'm sorry. But the, uh, and the point of that is that I think that it's, it's not uncommon to see counties, um, uh, consider these projects to be important overall. Uh, we did quite a bit of research on the, on the overall impact from a economic standpoint. Uh, infrastructure projects of any size, this one at 43 million has a significant impact in, in economic development in that corner of the county and maybe in other areas of the county as well. Um, we, we, um, have been able to do that research and, and, and tell you with, with, uh, um, pretty high level of confidence that, let me get to that page here real quick in my handout. Um, we would expect, um, project-related jobs for a project that size to be in the some, somewhere in the 911, 920, uh, positions, indirect jobs, not project-related. This would be vendors and suppliers and subcontractors at 2,200, 40, that's a $43 million project. So the numbers are high. Wastewater projects usually spend out about 54% of their, their expected impact within three years and 100% within five years. So $43 million indirect stimulus within that five-year period. Indirect, um, and indirect impact, there's a thing that, that, um, economic developers use called the multiplier effect. This is common when trying to determine what the impact of infrastructure projects are. For a wastewater project at that level, expect it to be one and a half times the capital cost of the project. So that multiplier is mean, that, and what that, what that is applied to is spending by workers, by vendors, suppliers, construction companies. And so that total at one and a half times is going to be somewhere in the $64 million range within the economic area of, of La Porte County. Permanent infrastructure support in La Porte County, um, and this is bringing wastewater to that northeast corner in Hudson and Galena Township, um, kind of puts us in close proximity to, uh, some growth areas if, if the county ultimately considers that. Um, that could be, um, allow the county to somewhat capitalize on the investment that we've heard about in St. Joseph County, uh, with GM and Samsung, about three, about three quarters of a mile from the east county line, uh, where they're going to spend, uh, $3 billion in, uh, building a huge battery factory with Samsung and, uh, and bringing somewhere around 1,700 employees to that site. So just the proximity alone, if we are able to provide utilities in that area, which this project would allow us to do, uh, could, could bring some collateral benefit to, to La Porte County. Talked to Mitch Bishop about that a little bit. There might be some logic to do a little bit more planning or a little bit more discussion on that. But, uh, right now there is no, there is no plan for that, but, uh, I think it's probably something that ought to be looked at. But overall, what we're asking you to do, not, we, we know you can't formally vote on this tonight, but we're suggesting that's something that you put into your thought process. Um, and in this case, we're, we're requesting one and a half million dollars for the regional sewage district and the customers at Hudson and Saucony Lake to help us buy down the costs of the project, help us qualify for additional subsidization from SRF and USDA. We also are planning to do a ready, uh, 2.0 grant application. And as you know, that program also requires a match from local government. Uh, we will get part of that from, from the regional sewage districts funds that they're going to be collecting from loan and grant. But, um, your contribution will help us, uh, qualify that most certainly. So anyway, that's all I had. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have or, or anything like that. But project, by the way, is, is, uh, programmed start construction in spring of '24.
I don't really have any questions, but, um, no, that's kind of my neighborhood. I was born and raised in Rolling Prairie.
Yeah.
You know, all the work we've done in Rolling Prairie, they have the unincorporated town that have access to sewer line. And I, I know that you certainly have your issues with this one. Funny thing, Saucony Lake, there's, most of the people out there want that. They see the value. They want to save their lake. Hudson, I know from when I was a kid what Hudson Lake used to be, when the casino was there and Al Capone had parties. I mean, this was a big, and the lake was beautiful. It's really gone downhill over the years.
Yeah.
And like you mentioned with the battery plant and we've got some other pretty big projects that we're working on with the RDC. Uh, we're going to need housing and you, we all know what, what lake property does.
Yeah.
And with the addition of sewer lines, I think you're going to see probably a lot of the ones that, if you drive around, you know, there've been a lot of them that's been abandoned or let go, um, that you're going to see a turnover. You bring Hudson Lake back to what it used to be, and that would be the catalyst by all means, the sewer line. So I know you got uphill battle, but, uh, I've seen you in action. I know you can do it.
Yeah. The, they, it's, it's, um, I would, I would be able to say with certainty that reinvestment in real estate in, in a community like Hudson Lake is, is, uh, typical after a wastewater project is completed. Um, we've, we've probably over the years, it's been a while since I've added them up, but we've, we've worked on, uh, projects where we've sewer, sewered about 100 lakes. And every single one of those saw a revitalization in their residential housing stock. Uh, not only just preserving the housing stock, which is one of the threats at Hudson Lake currently, um, but, uh, but also seeing a significant increase in value. And, uh, so we see homes, uh, if you're familiar, you're not too far from here actually, in, uh, Cass County at Diamond Lake. That was a project that we worked on, uh, years ago when I was with another firm. And, uh, they turn around and, uh, and that community has been, uh, staggering. So, um, I, I would say that there's a, you know, there's a certain, uh, high level of certainty that, that you'll see a revitalization of the housing stock there if this goes forward. So.
Well, thank you for your presentation.
Absolutely. Thank you for, uh, listening to me. So.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, guys.
Public hearing, public comments.
Hello. My name's Alex Holliday. I live in 8823 East Front Street in Mill Creek. Uh, for 10 year, over 10 years now, I've tried to get in touch with the commute or the county building and numerous occasions I've talked to supervisors. There's a stretch from 875 to my driveway that is not being maintenance. I'm using the railroad's property to get to my driveway. Um, they keep on telling me that they will come and check this out. I've never heard anything from anybody. I've never asked for anything other than maybe put some asphalt grindings down for, through the road. They don't even have to snow plow it. I'll take care of that part. I'll even maintenance it after they do that. Um, I just got recently, uh, approved to have a bait and tackle shop back in my property. And it's going to be bad if my customers are going to be going on railroad property to get to me. It's not a good thing. That's pretty much trespassing under federal property. I don't know where else to go with this. I was told to come to you guys to ask. And that's pretty much all I've got to say. I don't know what else to do.
What's your address again, sir?
It's 8823.
8823 Front.
Front Street. The other side of 875 is paved. And I'm the only side, I'm the only one with the house. I live probably about half a mile back in the back. But like I said, I'd like to start this business too. And.
But 875 South?
Uh.
West, it'd be south or east?
It, I think it's east, because it runs north and south. So it would be east. Yeah.
I will ask our highway superintendent to come out and take a look at it.
Um, okay.
If not tomorrow, next week for sure and see what we can do.
I really appreciate, um, like there's like five to 700 feet of roadway. I think it's not, nothing. It's grass and where it's supposed to be. It's in between the old Mill Creek store and a telephone pole and it's tight. But that's where the road's supposed to be. And we've been driving on it. He can see where we've been driving, trying to make the roadway back. Then it turns in the mud. So, and I don't want, and then railroad, they block up their area and we have to drive around them through the weeds and the mud sometimes to get around them. It's.
Shouldn't have to do that.
Ten, over 10 years now. It's something they gotta change. Yeah. But, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll look into it.
I'm sorry if I gotta get out.
It's, that's, that's fine. I, I'm pretty sure our highway superintendent will be looking at that real soon. She's, she's smiling. She's smiling and nodding her head. That's.
Thank you.
Public comments. Still open the public comments.
Name is Tom Sharp, 2122 South Taylor Road in Mill Creek, uh, and an advocate for the, uh, the trail, recreation trail connecting Fish Lake and Mill Creek. And I wanted to kind of piggyback on what this gentleman was saying about the water situation and that. Um, and with the battery plant, and that battery plant is about a 20-minute commute from Mill Creek. Now, can we start drawing people into La Porte County, into Lincoln Township, into Mill Creek? How are we going to do that? This trail will do that. Keep in mind what this trail is going to do. It's a bike trail. It's going to connect Fish Lake and Mill Creek with a 10-minute bike trail. 10 minutes. You got your infrastructure, your community infrastructure of a library, general store, a restaurant, and a post office. You bring it all those together within 10 minutes of each other. That's attraction. And that's what that community needs. And I remember the tourist people once at a zone meeting, they were saying, you do anything like this, the whole community appreciates, everything appreciates in the community. And so that's, and it's a little out of my sequence of what I want to talk about, but I think it was kind of appropriate right there. And I was here June 7th, and I talked to you folks about that petition against the, uh, the recreation trail. And I highlighted all the, uh, the errors that are in it as such. Now, what I like, what we would like for you folks to do is return that petition to the author. Get that narrative corrected, repetition it. Is that something we can do? You can do. Cause it's presented to you, I presume, as the Board of Commissioners. So that, and it's, it's just not accurate. It's more fabrication than anything. And it's unfair to the people that signed it, I think.
We, we could certainly ask. We could certainly ask him to take another look at it.
Okay. All right. Appreciate that. Okay. Good. Um, and Mr. Rosinsky's, uh, pancake metaphor that we talked about June 7th.
That's right.
Both sides of the issue. And I assume that the favorable to the trail is the syrup and butter. And if you anyway, cooks pancakes using the other side, you kind of burn it a little bit. That's the dark side. I kind of look at that way. So the dark side, what are they saying, uh, in the communications that you're getting about that trail? That what's bad about it?
Well, this is public comment. So I mean, pretty much during public comment, you just kind of state.
It's one way?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
You state what you, you know, the, the issues are. We listen to it and then we usually all write down your names and that. And then we try to get back to you on, uh, you know, someone will contact you. So it's really not a back and forth.
Yeah, I, I've worked with Mitch on this from the beginning and I know the challenges we have and we're, we're still working on it. We're, we're trying to get through it. But right now we've got a couple of issues there that we're not sure how we're going to get by, but I guarantee you we are working on it. So.
Well, I'd like to, is there some time in the future that we can, we've met with you folks twice. Exception there, but, uh, can we meet again sometime? It's, I think the, with this petition coming through, everything kind of fizzled.
We'll talk to Mitch Bishop and we'll see if he can coordinate something, um, with the community.
I'm sorry to hear the first part.
I said, I'll, I'll talk to our, um, planner and then see if we can get some kind of a meeting just specific to that issue.
And then.
You know, we can get the community out.
So we're going to get it back on track as far as we're concerned.
Yes. Yes.
And the other thing is too, is that we have part of that, that trail is that we've cleared the woods out and we want to keep working on it. Is that fair?
So we, we can't give you an answer today, but then what we'll do is like I, I've got your name written down and I'll have, um, our planner contact you and then maybe you can talk about some of those issues.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Thank you for coming in.
Hello. Rodney McCormick, 617 Union Street. Um, happy birthday, Madam President.
Thank you.
Um, I'm here to get an answer to, and I know you're going to give that to me. So I don't know if you want to do it now or wait till later. And I'm here for the voting center part of this, but I seen something on here about the drawbridge in Michigan City. Is there a long-term fix to that bridge? So we want it to continue to go through this. And if this is about money in Michigan City, not, I don't know if Michigan City want to kick in or not, but if I can just make a suggestion, if this, if that's a part of the problem, maybe we give out beach stickers to all of the county residents instead of just the Michigan City residents to help make up for some of this. Because I, I see that that might be part of the problem. And I think everybody from the county should just come in for free for maybe five years. Uh, it's something that needs to be done if you're putting in the most money. Um, I, we need a long-term fix to this bridge. We can't keep going back and forth with it. Um, the people that's working on it now, they're doing a great job, but I don't know how much longer it's going to continue to hold up. And I'm tired of hearing about it. And I hope it's changing my lifetime. So, um, I'm here also for the voting centers. This has been a long time coming. Um, when the other party was in control, they refused to do anything about it. Now we are here. It's the greatest feeling in the world to be a part of something that makes things better for citizens in this community. Every one of you should be proud. Heather Stevens, hats off to her. She, we've been there, good and bad, people in the voter registration office, Al Stevens, we put up with a lot of stuff. And now this is the day. Please don't prolong it when the vote time come up. Be, uh, quick with it so we can move on. Um, and if we can just do a little bit more working together with each other, um, stop the name calling, please. And just be cordial. Just, just, it's easy to do. I mean, I never thought I would ever be talking to Rich Rosicky. Never, never thought I'd shake his hand in my life. People change. And we have to understand that. We all make mistakes. I made a lot of them in my life. And a lot of us up here made mistakes. You guys need to settle this and we need to have peaceful meetings from now on. And I hope that we can do this. Cause if I can change, all of you should change. You always telling me about changing and here I am, the one changing and you're not doing it. I don't want to be left out by myself. And I don't want the dark side of the pancake, by the way. So with that being said, um, things are moving along and I hope that, um, people in our neighborhood and our community take the initiative like I did today. And I started, I do a lot of complaining. I went and got some garbage bags and I just got on my moped and start picking up trash in my neighborhood. Do your part to make Michigan City and the county clean. And, um, let's just do it together. It's going to take all of us to do it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Winnie Hany, 2695 West Juliet Road. Good evening, Commissioners. I've been watching you for years and I have a message that needs to be heard. There's a story that comes to mind when I think about the way emergencies are declared in this county. It's the story of the boy who cried wolf. You see, when you declare an emergency for something that's not truly an emergency, when a real emergency comes along, it's like the boy who cried wolf. People will not believe you and it's the taxpayers who suffer. I implore you to think and be responsible with taxpayer dollars and prioritize the needs of this county. When you do declare an emergency, it should be for real emergencies, not for something that should wait, isn't a true emergency, or something that should have been foreseeable and planned for, instead of put off until you have no choice but to declare it an emergency. Taxpayers need to be up here and voice their opinions. They need to be heard. If you don't say anything, nothing will change. So I'm here tonight to be the voice of the people. We want to see effective and responsible leadership from all of our commissioners. And we hope that you will take these concerns seriously. Remember, the squeaky wheel gets degreased and I'm here to make a little noise. So please seriously consider my comments here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment. Do we have any public comment on Zoom? Public comment going once, going twice, close of public comment. We'll move on to department head comments.
Good evening. Happy birthday.
Thank you. Good evening.
Jeremy Sebecky from the Parks Department and Mitch Bishop is here with me. Um, I, I emailed you, uh, yesterday about a, a potential project we're trying to help, uh, Westville with. Um, it would, it would, um, extend Lincoln Trail, uh, into Westville, all the way through Westville actually from the, from 350, 350 South.
200 South.
Yeah, to, uh, to, um, all the way to, um, Prairie Meadow, Prairie.
Prairie Meadow Park.
Prairie Meadow Park.
421.
Yeah. So, so it's, it would add almost three quarters of a mile to that. Um, but, but essentially I'm not here asking that the county do this. We're working with Westville. This is going to be a town of Westville project, but Mitch and I have the knowledge and, and experience with these grants and stuff. So we're helping them, you know, we want to help them put this grant in and, and hopefully get, um, potentially a million dollar project done for, for the town of Westville. So, um, I sent you the map and, and Commissioner Haney was, uh, good enough to come out there with us yesterday and kind of look at the route and, and see that it, it kind of makes sense that, you know, if you have bike traffic and stuff like that, it's hard to cross two there along 421. And this would help with that. And, 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 uh, so I just wanted to update you on that.
Yeah, it, it would tie a large node in that community, which is Prairie Meadow Park and six and 421. As you know, um, about three years ago, I received roughly like 3.5 million in both federal, state and local funds, um, and foundation funds to tie that same trail to Purdue Northwest, adding three miles to the system. Um, if this was added, it would connect directly to the town. Um, if this was added, it would connect directly to the town and add that total trail would be around seven miles. So they don't have the manpower to do it. So we're trying to, we're just informing you if it's okay with you. We'd like to assist that town, um, with this endeavor. So that's, that's why we're here tonight, just to let you know. And if it's okay, I don't know if we need a permission. We don't, I don't think we need anything as far as uh, intergovernmental agreement or anything between us and the town. But it's just informally telling you if it's okay, your permission.
I think it's a wonderful thing to seeing us work with all the other townships and making sure that we're all working together. It really enhances the entire county. So I, I commend both of you for coming forth and just really working with the other townships and, and making sure that we're moving the entire county forward.
That's fantastic. Thank you for showing me, showing me the new proposed trail, be able to connect those two parks. And also get that, you know, the full tie in there, especially with dealing with some of the, as you're crossing some of those roadways. It'd be a huge benefit. So, um, just in case, I'll make a motion to allow, uh, our county planner and park superintendent to, uh, dedicate some time in helping, uh, Westville secure their grants and planning for, uh, for this new trail.
Would I have a second on the motion?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
I also wanted to just update you on, um, another thing we had go on. We showed Commissioner Haney yesterday. Um, we had a wheelchair accessible picnic table donated, a really nice picnic table donated from the wheelchair shop in Michigan City. And my, uh, for Bloom, since we put in the, the ramped playground and all of that stuff a few years ago. And, um, my park foundation donated a, um, bought and donated a gazebo to go over it for, so that shaded. So, so this was all, um, and they put a concrete pad down. So it's all wheelchair accessible. So this is all, you know, free items we're getting from different organizations and things, just because, you know, we had the healthcare foundation put in the playground. That was a, a wheelchair accessible playground. It's kind of snowballed into people seeing that and saying, that's a great thing. I want to donate a picnic table so that there's a place for them to pull up to and, and sit in the shade now. And, and so we were uh, putting up the gazebo yesterday as Commissioner Haney was out there and, and was able to see that. So, uh, some, some good, obviously some good things happening in the parks. And then we also have the, the, um, the restroom. We started construction on the restroom at Creek Ridge, um, a couple, probably a month ago or so. So we're doing that one in-house. We'll be getting a septic put in, uh, soon. And, um, so there are some improvements going on in the parks as well, as always. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. And I just want to say for, I took some time, uh, after we broke up yesterday, after our, looking at all the different plans and spoke briefly with, uh, with your team out there. And they are extremely hardworking, dedicated individuals. And they, they, without them, they couldn't make the parks as nice as they are. Cause the amount of time and effort they put into building these different things. So we don't have to contract that out. That's, that's huge.
It, it, I always say, you know, when, when people say what a good job, you know, cause it, it's true, it's a reflection on me, but it's always them. You know, I couldn't do it if I had guys that were trying to hide from me and, and not do the job they needed to do. And these guys are always, well, that everything I, we come up with, it's like, oh yeah, we're doing it, you know, and then jumping right on it. And, you know, today they were dripping, you know? It was hot today out in that sun, putting that roof on that building, you know, but, but they're out there and, and not complaining. And they see the benefit of it for the people and, and the people also notice it as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Department heads. Do we have any department heads on Zoom?
I guess if nobody else, so. Yeah, I, I think it was last month or so when Mr. McCormick asked me to check out the ramp at the, the new Michigan City courthouse. And I had Tom and Blank come out with all their instruments and it is spot dead on what it's supposed to be for, uh, to be ADA compliant. And I, I've got the printout there. If you can make, if you can make anything out of that, good luck. But I, I guarantee you it is what it's supposed to be. Now I went up and down it a few times and I watched some people go up and down it. It, it does seem steep, the, the way it goes zigzag back, but there are certain qualifications that that has to meet to be ADA compliant and it is spot on. So. The only other thing I want to, uh, report on was, uh, last week we had the oldest running fair in the state of Indiana, 177 years of the fair. And, uh, being one of the 18 guys on the fair board is, uh, uh, something I really take a lot of, of pride and, and joy. And those guys are, they're, they're like brothers, brothers and sisters. The way they get along, the way they know that fairgrounds, the way they, uh, get things done, the way they help each other out. Uh, they really do set a good example for any team of, of people working together. And it is a monumental task to put that fair together. It's huge. There's so many working parts. And we've already started working on next year because every year it's got to be a little bit bigger and a little bit better. But my hat's off to the fair board. They did an amazing job of pulling off the 177th Lepore County Fair. That's all I got.
Okay. Closing, uh, department head comments. Moving on to, we have nothing under old business, new business. Consider permission for Marquis Electric Company to approach council for funding for the 2023, 2024 drawbridge issues.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Andy Skiatt from Marquis Electric. So, um, happy birthday, Commissioner Graham Rosa. And I would like to compliment the auditor on his shoes.
Thank you so much.
Um, so I would also, I, I would also like to, uh, to state and say thank you. Um, before we get into the bridge discussion. So there was a gentleman named Tom Walma, which, uh, he was the owner and his family owned Harrison Electric, which is actually a motor and machine shop in Michigan City. Um, I used to go there when I was a, a very young child with my dad and he's been a great partner with Marquis. Um, on the bridge and with numerous projects, um, high level, important projects for many years since my childhood. And the spring of 2023, uh, Mr. Walma decided to sell his business. So there was no one there that, that wanted to, to continue the business internally. So that we had lost another local family business there. That's sad to me. And with that, we also lost a bunch of knowledge. But he was a great partner and a great asset. So, um, he didn't come up to the podium here with me much and speak. But, uh, when we left the, the bridge project this last spring, that was his last day and his last job. So I just wanted to say thank you to him because we lost a ton of information there. So, um, I'm onto the bridge for this year. Sorry. So, um, this year, um, the plan, which would be pretty much the last phase for me. Uh, so, so if the elected officials chose to, to move forward this year, uh, the, the goal would bring, would be to bring all the electrical and mechanical equipment that was done the last several years, to tie that all together. Bring that all into a new control system, replace that control system and write a whole new program that operates the bridge. Currently the programming for the bridge, there's some life safety code issues in that program that could pose some operational faults with the bridge. Um, we knew that when we started this plan, uh, we, the reason we didn't address those issues first is because if we would have addressed the programming issues first with the controls, the old equipment wouldn't have been able to run on that program with those controls. So first we had to replace the mechanical and the electrical equipment with more modern equipment that could handle the current controls and the new programming. So, so that has been done. Um, if, if it's chosen by the leadership to, to finish this, um, next year, there's made, there's some little bit of structural work that, that would need to be done. Uh, personally, my firm or myself would not perform that work. I would be happy to offer an opinion on, on some possible work to be done there. But you wouldn't need my direct services nor my staff to perform that work. It would more, more be structural steel and some roadwork. So, um, this would be about it for me, uh, to get everything, you know, up to date and current, other than the continued maintenance. Um, I wasn't sure if there was interest in, in doing that this year, but I have been asked, you know, Mr. Haney and I spoke a couple of weeks ago. And he asked for, for the tentative plan and some other elected official has asked. So I wanted to present that. Um, I would respectfully like to state that due to the contention in the county in general and always over the drawbridge for many years. Um, that if it's not 11-0, um, which would include on my behalf, a, a vote of approval from the auditor, I would not proceed with the work strictly be, not that I'm not thankful or appreciative, strictly because I don't want to be another focal point of contention in the county.
Thank you, Andy. That, uh, I look at it as one big, long project and, and I'm glad to see we're finally bringing it in. Uh, you know, it would have been nice if we could have just dropped 20 million on it to start with and do the whole thing at once. But it's the way we do it, million, million and a half a year. We're getting it and about ready to finish it up. That's good. Um, you know, I have talked to people on the Michigan City Council. I said, that's in a Tiff area. You got, you got a bunch of money in there. When we get them to, to contribute. Well, that never went anywhere. And you'll get a kick out of this. I was approached by a company out of Denver, United Bridge Partners. They said, we met with them. Myself and Matt Riordan said, well, we'd like to help you with the bridge. Okay. So we got about 32 million bucks in the bank. We'll, uh, we'll, we'll take over the bridge and we'll completely redo it. It'll be like a brand new bridge. Okay? What's the other side of that? How do you pay for that? Well, you put a toll. Every time you go over the bridge, you got to pay a toll. Two, two fifty every time. You know, you'd have to get a transponder like you do on the toll road. Uh, anybody I've talked to about that, and nobody's thing seemed to think it was a great idea. But I'm glad to see we're about ready to, uh, bring it in because it's, it is a lifeline. And, uh, we need to fix it. So I would make a motion that we, uh, give, uh, and give Marquis Electric the, uh, to be able to have permission to approach the council for funding for this last, last leg of this project.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Skiatt, uh, you indicated this is the last portion of the five million that we started on back, uh, two, will be two and a half years ago now.
Uh, there would be one more portion, which would ideally be next year at the elected officials discretion. But that would be some structural steel. So, um, I don't know if it's appropriate to, to mention Mr. Stevens. When, when, you know, but he's here and, uh, when he was the highway superintendent, him and I had a nice meeting at the bridge. He contacted me when he took over the, the position and, and we met down there. And, and I think even he would speak or could speak on the condition of some of those items down there. But, but we don't do that type of work in-house at our firm. So I mean, I'd be happy to go there or offer an opinion or consult or whatever the adequate way to phrase that is. But there would be one more leg, leg of the journey there, but the work, the physical work would not be performed by myself or my staff. So, um, you would have to engage someone else to do that.
Very good. Thank you. Um, looking back, I think at the time, the first, uh, the first, uh, the first, uh, dealing we had with this. I was hopeful and I, I, I had suggested perhaps that we do, you know, approve, approve the full five million right out of the gate. That way we wouldn't have to come back year after year. Um, last year, obviously we had some issues with the casting parts that were very unique. Uh, that kind of fit more under a special purchase statute. Um, given what you said here earlier and nope, you know, with some of the, some of the, um, bidding and quote portions of the statute, you know, uh, two and a half years ago, we had a different county attorney. Who had some different views on things, uh, that may vary from some of the attorneys that may, may now be involved and engaged. It would be, it would be my concern that given time constraints that if this were to move on to the council and they had issues with it and it didn't get funded, then it would have to come back to us. Cause I'm, the council meets every, you know, once a month. So that would put us at the beginning of the August meeting to come back and readdress it. I would, I would be more inclined. To, uh, in order to try and maybe perhaps prevent that. And, you know, I'm not trying to fully read into where the council is. But given, um, given legal opinions changing in some ways, um, over the years, I'd be more inclined to, uh, amend Commissioner Rosinski's, uh, motion to one of, uh, to direct, um, uh, that the project be specked out and advertised and the council be approached for, uh, additional funding at the August meeting. Uh, but again, that's trying, trying to get ahead of.
What is your, your change? What, what do you want to change?
Um, I, I, I would amend, make a motion to amend Commissioner Rosinski's motion. Cause that would be the appropriate way to do it right now, um, to direct the project to be specked out and advertised. And the council be approached for appropriation at their August meeting. That way it gives them plenty of time to advertise.
So we have a motion and you're just.
My motion would be to amend his motion. And if, you know, if it's not seconded, then it would fail. And then someone could second Commissioner Rosinski's original motion and go from there. So.
Do you, uh, do you anticipate that you're going to have to have parts made?
Yeah. So all the controls will be custom made and all the program will be have to be custom written for the bridge. And the components that are on that bridge.
And lead time we have on that.
Um, so when I was speaking with WJE, um, with some, some requests from some of the county leadership to, to put the probable or potential plan together, I spoke with them. And that's why I sent the rough draft, um, to all the commissioners and the councilmen, um, and the legal counsel to ask for permission to approach this meeting, um, for approval from the commission. And then see about funding from the council because myself and WJE mainly thought if it didn't happen at the next two meetings, then the work would not take place this year.
So we don't want to delay any longer than we have to. I, I don't understand what the difference is on your, 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 uh.
He wants to send it out to get, um, specked and bid it, correct?
Yes.
What would you present to the council anyway? Wouldn't you do that? Isn't that part of your presentation to the council?
So, so we would come with our costs, our final costs. And then we would just ask, I guess it'd be funding. Is that the right way to state that? We would ask for that work to be funded and then we would proceed from there. So, um, that, that, I don't know what the right term.
And you, Commissioner Haney, you wanted to go out to bid. Is that correct?
My motion was pretty clear.
Yes. So your, your motion, just so that we understand, because Mr. Um, Rosinski, Commissioner Rosinski had asked. So you want the, you want to amend his motion and you want it to go out to bid and be specked, correct?
To have it specked and advertised.
Advertised in, in what, in what form?
I'm leaving, I'm, I'm leaving it fairly, fairly open so that depending on what legal counsel decides to go with, whether it's a bid process, a quote process, um, or whatever it would fall under, it gives some latitude and leeway for that. Rather than to pen it into one position at this point.
Okay. So you want, you want an engineer to come in.
What I'm trying preempting, get ahead of is if, if it's found by the council that it, and they determine that they think it should be bid out and they don't want to fund it, then we're pushing, we continue to push back weeks. I mean, they, I would like to preempt and get ahead of that. I mean, we are here in, you know, the end of July now. It's, we're getting closer to winter, um, where this stuff needs to be done and parts need to be ordered. I'm trying to get out in front of what I think may be, may wind up being an issue. So it, and if, and if you're not, if you're not okay with that, that's fine. Then it can die for lack of a second and then we just move on.
I just want to understand. So you want us to put it out to spec? And that would mean that an engineer would have to come in and spec it all out, correct?
What, what, whether, whether it's Mark Whis, Mark Whis, N W J E, W J E, however, it's engineering services. So I'm not particular on that whatsoever. Um, you know, the, 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 the entirety of knowledge rests in, in, in both Marquis and WJE on this bridge. They are the experts on it.
So does W, so do you have specs currently to, to tell us what exact work you're doing? I know that a lot of it is custom. So as you work on it, go ahead, sir.
Sorry. No, I, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I, I would not expect that, 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 that's why we would direct it to be done or order it to be done. That, that, I wouldn't expect Marquis to put in their work to do that or WJE to do that for free. They would need to put that as part of their things as, as part of a standalone. I'm not gonna, I wouldn't sit here and ask them to do work for free on that. I mean, if they, if it does get specked out and advertised, depending on how this progresses as it moves out, that's why it's so. I'm trying to be as broad as possible to cover all of our bases here. That way that, you know, they wind up doing the work. They've already gotten paid for whatever specking and engineering they have to do. If it goes the full-on process, then, then they would at least be compensated for that portion. Cause it wouldn't be fair to have them draft up a bunch of specifics and then not get compensated for it. Does that make sense?
Yeah. All, all I can say, I'm speaking for WJE, cause they do this full-time. Um, and this is off of phone conversations with them, not, you know what I mean? Like they're not here obviously to present this. Is they told me that since our work the last two years, based on time of award to time to completion, that they now travel around the United States giving seminars to municipalities on how fast that was done and how that was done because it's unheard of. So they had told me, which I wouldn't have the means to do, you would have to engage them, that to write a spec for the work we have been doing there in the winter would take nine months to a year to write that spec. And then from there. And then from there you would have to seek quotes or bids and then from there select contractors and then order the custom parts and move on. So they said it'd be a year to two years and I, I'm, I can't say that because I don't write those specs. That's what they do for a living. All I can tell you for sure is that they now do seminars on what we've done here the last couple of years in the timeframe we've done it on.
So you already know what you need to do?
Yes, sir.
And you know what parts you need to order?
Pretty much so.
And you know pretty much what that's going to cost?
Yes, sir.
So you're basically asking for permission to go to the council for the funding on the work that has been a five-year project and that we, we had it broken down and we knew what it was going to be four years ago and we are just proceeding with the project that we have had in motion for the last four years, correct?
Yes, a respectful asking for eleven zero permission, just so I'm not in the middle of another argumentative topic.
Okay.
Excuse me, ma'am president. May I ask you a question?
Sure.
Thank you, ma'am president. Uh, Mr. Skiat, how much, if you have a ballpark figure, would an engineering study cost?
I think Commissioner Haney spoke with them last year, maybe, right? Did about go on that route?
I, I spoke, I spoke with them briefly about a couple of different things. Um, can I, I do not recall the specifics on that and exactly where we came down on.
I, I can tell you so. I can tell you for certain, um, not doing engineering for plan and spec. So which would obviously be a longer, more expensive process because they would have to do full blueprints, full detail, full written specifications, down to every screw, the torque, the paint, the epoxy, the programming, what needs to be in that programming, that would all have to be written out in detail, which is why the process is. I can tell you for a fact there, uh, for lack of a non-professional term, because I don't know how else to say it, their bar napkin engineering for this year just to put a stamp on it for legality due to the type of federal structure we're working on. When they know I can do the work, their engineering for that easy, much easier route is about four hundred and seventy thousand.
Thank you.
So it'd be four hundred and seventy thousand to have it specked out?
No, that's for the easy route to go with me, which is maybe way less, way less work than writing a plan and spec to go out for bids. That, that's what their share, not the parts, not the installation by me, for them to do a, a very rough sketch based on our knowledge of the bridge. So they can put a stamp on it to make it an official document due to the type of structure going this route, which is way simpler. That, that portion is four hundred and seventy thousand. So what plan and spec would cost? I have no idea.
How long would that take to perform?
Um, they, they put in writing to me that if it's not approved, the plan and spec or the easy route?
The easy route.
They put in writing to me since we spoke a couple of weeks ago, that if it's not approved back to back at the next two meetings, it's a no-go for this year.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll restate my motion to, uh, allow Marquis Electric to, uh, permission to go to the county council to present their plan to them for funding for this year's final, most, almost final part of the bridge.
Do we have a second?
No.
I'll step down and, and second.
Ma'am president, may I ask one question?
Sure.
Andy, can you clarify again? This, this does represent a long-term commitment to the bridge. I mean, to the degree that public officials has have been talking about the notion of eventually replacing the bridge, this is intended to, um, extend the longevity of the bridge such that, you know, we're investing in a way that gets us something for a period of upwards of what? I mean, there's more to come. Obviously there's the structural work, but can you just repeat? Because we haven't talked about this since last year. That we're not throwing, leaving aside the issues of bidding and all that, that we're not throwing good money after bad. It's a separate issue I'm bringing up here.
So in two thousand seventeen, I can't speak for facts on the cost, maybe one of the commissioners can or someone can, but in two thousand seventeen, um, the county engaged an, uh, engineering firm called Lochner to do a detailed study on the bridge. I think maybe just, I think that survey might've been around a million dollars. It took over a year to complete. It was very detailed survey. That was pre-COVID money. We all know what's happened to costs pertaining to everything, especially construction since COVID. The multiplier is, is crazy. So that study is a book maybe about this thick. It goes into economic loss, traffic delays, the, the whole thing. So, so they, they surveyed four options. Either redoing the, the bridge that's there with the maintenance plan, like, like what we've had been taking on annually, replacing the bridge with a bridge in kind, or replacing the bridge with a new bridge. So at that time, they don't, I, the money's accurate, the timelines, it's been a while since I read that whole book, but I believe at that time in two thousand seventeen dollars, which is nowhere near relevant, they cited the best option to be would be based on that survey to get lifespan out of the bridge was to rehab the existing components. And I think they said they would hope to get like thirteen to fifteen years out of those components. And they estimated that cost in two thousand seventeen dollars at twenty-five million. So their survey, I think they said like three million, two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars or something, um, just for engineering costs alone to do that twenty-five million dollar rehab. To replace the bridge with another type of bridge, I think similar in kind in two thousand seventeen dollars with eighty or ninety million. And to replace the bridge with a different type of structure, I think was about a hundred and twenty million. So we had been doing the bridge, um, since the maintenance on the bridge since nineteen eighty-one. Um, so, so that's when I was approached about if I could come up with a plan. Oh, and they also wanted, I think it was a year closure full-time of that structure to do that twenty-five million dollar rehab. And in that, in that study, it cited the net economic loss due to the lakefront, you know, because of your main thoroughfare. And I said, they, I think they said the net economic loss was estimated at forty-five million to close that bridge to do that rehab. So based on that, I was approached, what my thoughts were, and I had proposed based on our maintenance experience that we could do all our work in the off-season, which was December first to March fifteenth, to avoid any, any closure during the peak season for the beach. And I, at that time I asked for a, a, a five-year plan of approximately five million dollars. So I'm sure that the elected leadership or legal could go back and check the records. I think at that time the commission voted, um, on all five years to approve that. And then I think when it went to the council, the council voted to fund that year by year. So that's what's brought us back here every year is I think that's what they chose to fund it is, is annually instead of the whole five-year plan. The work is, we, we've gotten a little more involved in our work. Um, one, there was a little increase in costs from the five million due to inflation since COVID. And two, our work got a little more in-depth, so it was requested by some of the elected leaders throughout the years to do some, when we do our work, integrate some options for the county in the future if they should so choose or so need to run that bridge remotely. Um, so a lot of our work, our controls and programming have been based towards, you know, relatively easy in a sense of you're working on a bridge, obviously, and one of a kind bridge. That, that when we were complete, there could be some components put into play where if the county so choose down the road, then that bridge could be run remotely. And also now that both leaves have to operate simultaneously. And that poses some problems when there's a problem on one side and not the other, or with high winds. So we've also worked towards where we could run each leaf independently and not need to run both leaves. So if we just had to let a smaller boat through, like a sailboat with a high mast, we could run one side of that bridge. So, um, the work got way more involved and complex than what, what was originally proposed. And that was some inflation cost from COVID is what put us over our, our five million dollar budget, which I think would have been spot on at the time in two thousand eighteen or whatever. But, uh, so that this would be the last of, of the mechanical and electrical items for quite a few years, other than the monthly maintenance, which you see, obviously we send those bills to you. And, uh, then you'd need some structural repairs on some steel to thrust it out and some gusset plates and, uh, other than maintenance, I would, in my opinion, you'd be good for, for a while.
Years or a period of years, period of years. Thank you. I just, the point I just wanted to emphasize about that i- is that the study did indeed say that the maintenance option was the, for the, for the taxpayers was the cheapest out.
It was, in the study, it was black and white and it was a thorough, detailed study. The twenty-five million, literally, I'm going to say to buy you time again unofficially till the county can come up with a, a much larger plan for a hundred some million dollar project whenever that would happen. It's a big deal.
And that study is in my office if anyone wants to see it.
It's a federal waterway. You've got federal funding that comes into play from the county. If the bridge don't operate, you've got federal penalties for the waterway not being navigable. You've got a hundred million dollar historical structure. If something goes wrong, you're replacing. It, it's a huge deal and that, that's why I asked for eleven or eleven oh or, or it's just, it's too much to be honest, you know?
And so you would still, um, want it to be bid it and put out the specs and be bid it, correct?
And one, one more thing, sorry, Commissioner, not to cut you off. I would like to state that last year, uh, I think it'll be more this year just because we already have a number, a budgetary number from W J E. But last year the council did appropriate a million and a half again because we were under the gun timeline. And our, our final invoice came in at like one million, one hundred and sixty thousand. So we were three hundred and forty thousand under the appropriated amount for our work last year, just to be clear.
We certainly appreciate that. Um, I, I think we've covered most of this enough. I, I, I would say that, um, my vote here to, tonight, this evening will be the last thing. I have to say on it, you know, and I'll respect the wishes of the board and whatever the council decides as well. So, that'll be the last word that I have on this will be my vote and that's it. So, and I'll respect the wishes of the council and commission to move forward. Or they choose.
To restate my motion.
So we have a motion on the table to give permission to, um, Marquis Electric Company to approach the council for funding for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four drawbridge issues. I have been involved in this issue on both ends, on the council and now on the commission. I have seen, um, what has happened on the commission in the past. I understand the severity, you know. I think that the problem is, is that a lot of people don't live up in Michigan City so that they don't see what's happening up in Michigan City and the importance of this bridge for the Michigan City residents. And we are one county. Um, it doesn't matter whether you live in South County or whether you live in Michigan City. We have to take care of the entire county. The idea, and we've gone through this route before in years past and we have tried, um, different options. And I'm not saying any, any of these other options are right or wrong. But the idea that we would be holding up and then, you know, taking a chance of going past the deadline that we would not be able to get this work done in a sufficient time that we would be reopening the bridge next year really concerns me. So with that being said, I will step down as president and I will second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Nay.
Two, one, it pass.
Thank you for your time.
B, consider commission liaison positions for two thousand twenty-three.
Yeah.
Just quickly to say, you know, there's been some issues of whether, you know, people were stripped completely down from liaison positions. I know that that was some of the stuff that was put out in the public and that was just not true. So I have asked, um, Mr. Rosinsky to rewrite the list and then we're going to go through it right now so that the public knows the truth.
Yeah, some of these have changed. Uh, I'll just read them off. Animal Control Board, Commissioner Rosinsky, Community Corrections, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Haney, Drainage Board, Commissioner Graham Marosa, E nine one one, Commissioner Rosinsky, Fair Board, Commissioner Rosinsky, Fair Board Management and Events Center, Commissioner Graham Marosa, Health Department, Commissioner Graham Marosa, Highway Department, Commissioner Graham Marosa, Job Evaluation, Commissioner Graham Marosa, Juvenile Center, Juvenile Service Center, Commissioner Haney, Kikikey River Basin and Yellow River Basin Development Commission, Commissioner Rosinsky, Museum, Commissioner Rosinsky, Northwest Indiana Regional Plan Commission, Commissioner Graham Marosa, Pioneer Cemetery Commission, Commissioner Graham Marosa, Plan Commission, Commissioner Haney, Redevelopment Commission, Commissioner Rosinsky, Regional Sewer District, Commissioner Haney, Right to Know, Commissioner Haney, Sheriff's Garage, Commissioner Rosinsky, Solid Waste Management, uh, District Board, uh, we're all on that. Waits and Measures, Commissioner Graham Marosa, and Workforce Development, Commissioner Graham Marosa, motion to approve the liaison position list.
Sorry, excuse me, ma'am president. On my copy, I don't see, oh, has that changed?
Okay. Motion to approve our current liaison assignment list.
Do we have a second? I'll step down as president and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those nay. Two to one, it pass. Moving on, consider contracts with Weaver Consultants to inventory all of the county roads, road miles, not inventoried with induct. Mitch Bishop will present that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Commissioners. Oh, last month I was putting together our latest community crossings grant application, which I just turned in last week. And part of that application, you have to look at the current inventory map that it has. There's a G I S application as part of that. You have to delineate what sections of roadways you would like to apply for. And this year applying for Fish Lake community, there's forty-six different segments. So when I was putting together the budget, I noticed there was like six or seven roadways segments in Fish Lake that weren't actually highlighted and qualified within the state inventory. So I went through the process and I got those added in the inventory, but subsequent to that, we looked at the, uh, whole map of the county and noticed there were quite a few segments that were not on inventory. These are segments that we currently maintain in the county. I never did put a, actually, you know, how many miles of those segments, but I do believe there's probably forty or fifty. And of course, those segments tie into our M V H funds and our local road funds as well. Um, our M V H funds, I think last year we received somewhere around six point two million and L R S, I think it was one point three. So we calculate that over a thousand miles, which we currently do have inventoried in the state mapping system. Um, it's roughly, you know, um, six thousand a road mile for M V H funds and a little over a thousand for L R S. So if we had fifty miles, that's a good chunk of change. And most of these were all in the county subdivisions. Um, and I also spoke with the G I S director for the state and this is nothing out of the ordinary. La Porte County is nothing special here. Um, other counties, including Marion, um, Jasper, I looked at and just bruising the map. Um, so this is nothing out of the ordinary. Um, basically he said, get in line because, but I wanted to fix it obviously because this is a good chunk of money. So what you had before you was a contract with Weaver, I believe was for twelve thousand, two hundred dollars. And it'll more than pay for itself. Um, once we sign this, they're going to get jump on it. And there's a whole process. I sent you an email, what needs to be done. I did it for Fish Lake and it took me like two weeks. So we're talking probably three hundred segments of roadways and I, I, I personally don't have the, the time with, you know, my workload to do that myself. So that's why you got the contract in front of you tonight. Weaver Contract also does all our P Azer ratings already. So they do our, they, they go out there and they rank our roads essentially one to ten. That's their job for asset management plan. That is required to apply for community crossing funds. So it was a natural fit and I think it's a very good price. And if we could accrue a quarter million dollars more money, it's, uh, well worth it, the twelve thousand. So.
Well, we appreciate your hard work. I'm, I mean, I know you're out there and you're really doing a lot for us. So do we have a motion?
That's a good catch too, by the way. That's a lot of money for the county that we should be getting and can be getting. So I would make a motion to approve the contract with Weaver.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consider discussion of change of, change work orders for community crossing paving project in the amount of eighty thousand, nine hundred, fifty dollars and twelve cents. So.
Right. So this got completed this spring. It was our latest community crossing, um, grant project. It was from six hundred County Road, six hundred West to Hupp Road, roughly ten miles. Reeve Riley won the bid. Um, these, this is basically, when the job was completed, this was the last invoice and it's the eighty thousand, um, majority, there was two change orders and they were approved. Um, one was temporary tape. Um, that was approved, um, via our engineer. Um that was approved um via our engineer at the time, Jay Sullivan. And a change order two was um removing millings, the shoulder millings and applying, I believe, uh uh topsoil for a couple residents. Um that was approved at our 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 past supervisor for the highway. And but then there's also the big dollar items on that, which were intermediate surface. Um typically, um well, at least the five years or six years of community crossings prior to this year, we would have an inspector on the job. This year, we didn't.
And so that's a good question because, I mean, I know that in our meeting um from April fifth, we were trying to get an on-call agreement with Etika Corporation not to exceed sixty thousand dollars. And I know at that meeting, it was said that we only had nineteen thousand dollars it allocated for an on-call engineer. And when I went back into the budget, we actually had over a hundred, close to probably a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that would have contracted with um U I C.
U S I.
U S I.
Yeah.
And so why did we not use them?
Um so we do have an on-call, that is correct, Commissioner. Um and you're you're right, I believe it is still a hundred, at least a hundred thousand into that account. Um every year, they give us an authorize authorization to proceed. And I think this year, there was eighteen thousand dollars roughly is what we charged. And basically, their job is to make sure we get what we pay for. So um a lot of times, what happens is um we have, of course, tonnage when it comes to intermediate and surface layers of asphalt. They take benchmarks and they take yields. So if we have twenty thousand tons of intermediate, let's say, and we, he would put benchmarks and and take about two yields a day. This is what commonly was done by U S I in the past. Um John Smith, I think, was last two or three years was that inspector. And so he would know that day, you know, is the immediate going over, is it coming under? And if there was a problem, then he would talk and usually they would provide the paver personally and make sure that when the job was done, he wouldn't necessarily have this issue. Now, there was authorization to proceed and there's nothing in the grant, community crossing grant, that said, we have to hire somebody. See, I'm gonna get that straight. But there was verbiage in there I put that we should have an inspector. It could have been our own highway guys doing it. Um but the authorization to proceed was given. And my understanding was I I gave it to the past supervisor and he gave it to the commissioners and uh for whatever reason, we're gonna do it in-house. And that's fine, but I'm not sure of what happened.
You're putting Mitch in kind of a bad spot here to have to explain it. And I talked to him about it beforehand. It's no fault of Mitch's, that's for sure. Um the, you should have had an inspector and you should have been taking the core samples. And the previous highway superintendent made the decision not to do that. And now we're getting fined almost eighty-one thousand dollars for not doing the inspection like we should have done. So unfortunate. I'll make a motion to approve that.
I know we do have.
But we don't really have a choice, pretty much, you have to.
Yeah, I I I will second the motion to approve that. And I I would just comment that um U S I's original bid was thirty thousand dollars. Um and uh we were told uh in a meeting, um you can go back and watch the tape, that there was nineteen thousand uh only available now.
It was a hundred and nineteen thousand.
Right, but we were told at the time. Now, if you've gone back and dug it up, that's fine. I mean, go back and re-watch the video uh of the meeting. But we were told at the time, there's nineteen thousand. Um you mentioned a contract that we did not approve for additional on-call work that was less than the cost for the uh services from U S I across the board. It was lower costs. Um and that would have been, didn't have to spend up to it, but we could have. Um so there's that. Didn't make the collectively, we didn't make the decision to have it done uh to 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 have it done in-house.
Have we made that decision?
By failing to it, by failing to address it. Could put it down two to one, so it is what it is. Um the U S I did come, U S I did come back after the project started and dropped their price to eighteen thousand, you're correct. Originally, they bid thirty thousand. Then, just as projects started, they seemed to be hungry for work. They came back, they knocked twelve grand off and dropped it down to eighteen thousand.
But we didn't hire them, right?
No, 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 we didn't. And um for what it's worth, almost every community crossing grant has overruns that we've done here, going back about past ten years. So it's important to understand that um, so for example, on Hup Road, uh uh between Hup and thirty-five, there was a a varying wideness in the road that was average. So the road, the actual width of the road, once it finally got measured out, was actually wider. And of course, we do a a uh time and materials uh tonnage pers- uh thing there. In addition to that, there was also the binder overrun cost, which you mentioned. Because on six hundred and fifty, uh thirty-nine, when they milled off, um make sure I have this correct here, because this goes back to uh the time when this came through. Uh when they milled off, they were actually down to gravel and rock. So that's why they had to actually put the extra, extra binder and use those extra materials. So per per the contract that we had with uh for the community crossing grant, there was a certain amount that had to be laid. And of course, once you got down to the gravel and rock, you have to build that subsurface up before you can put, put the top on there. Um so uh, you know.
So we have.
So there there there's, I I don't see how in any way, having inspected by a third party uh as opposed to in-house, would have changed any of the actual materials that were laid. Um it's, you know, with Reeve Riley, all you, all you, all the paving that we're gonna do this year with Reeve Riley, we don't use U S I for that, which is similar situation, right?
Maybe.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Right, no, I I and and I'm, and I'm sorry, you're getting put into political situation here, right? It's okay, Mitch. I I understand what's going on here. And, you know, if they wanna try and throw things around, it's fine. But um either way, it is what it is. So there's nothing out of the ordinary with this. Thank you.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Moving on, consider uh requests for limit road closures in the township of Hannah for Hannah Fest August twelfth of twenty twenty-three. And that's something that we normally do every year.
It is, and I don't know.
Before you start, I I apologize, Madam Chair. I I I meant to motion in the beginning to change uh, to change the agenda to read Hannah Fest, not presented by Heather Stevens, Hannah Fest, not Circuit Court Clerk. That was, that was my bad. I apologize for that. Because you're you're representing Hannah.
Yeah, I I do both and I didn't send this request in, so I, it's fine. It's whatever. As long as we can close the roads and have a fun little time at Hannah Fest. Keep everybody safe.
I would move to approve that.
So do we have a motion?
Yeah, and I would second it and caution you that uh even though it's a festival and even though the road is closed, we do have an ordinance that is very strictly lays out uh the use of golf carts.
Yes.
They need to follow the rules. They need to have, they need to have a license. They need to have all the stuff on it. Because uh when you see six kids, ten years old, all hanging on the same thing, going through somebody's yard, ain't gonna cut it.
Yeah, we're not a fan of that.
Okay, and I'll second the motion then.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Consider requests to keep dental and medical insurance for John Patrick Jones from J S C Educational Coordinator, who will be retiring June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. Is Monique on um?
Yeah, she's on.
Thomas, are you on um?
Towards the bottom there, Mo Thomas. Monique, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Hello?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, he's retired, he retired. He's just requesting to keep his dental benefits and his uh insurance, health insurance benefits.
And he does qualify?
Yes, yes, he does.
Motion to approve.
But before a second, just curious, is there a time timeline on this for carrying over to him getting something? Generally, we approve for like a month or something like that till they can find something else. Do you know what the, what the timeline is on that?
Yeah, he's retiring in a couple weeks. They're either retired June thirtieth.
So just the timeline on how long we're gonna carry out the insurance?
Oh, he, till he's sixty-five, up until the age of sixty-five, they can keep the county's insurance up until the age of sixty-five.
Okay.
And they pay the premiums, correct?
They pay their own premiums monthly, yes.
Yeah.
So we have a motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Consider requests to form formal vote and a resolution to be passed to move Laporte County from a precinct-based voting county to a voting center county.
Hi. Heather Stevens, County Clerk. Um I also have the other two members of the election board here with me. And what we're looking to do is to move fro- from, just as it says, the the traditional precinct-based voting. And we're, we're here to open it up to a vote center county. And basically, what that's going to mean is that any voter, any registered voter in Laporte County will be able to vote at any vote center in Laporte County. So we are required to have a total of eight vote centers in the county. And we actually put in thirty-eight. We have eight just in this, within the city of Michigan City. Another five or six within the city of Laporte. And everything else is is scattered and it's basically the same. Um couple of small changes, nothing major, but it's all in the vote center plan.
So my question is, I know that only eight are required and you are putting in the thirty-eight. You will not try to pass a few mu- years go by and then they'll try to shrink it down, correct?
We actually put, right, that's a great question. And we actually put that in the vote center plan. I made sure that it's in there. Um this plan can only be changed with, with a unanimous vote by the county election board, which will never be all one party, and that's by statute. There will be Democrats and Republicans on that board. So no, that that, that is not going to happen.
With the thirty-eight, and if anything, if the board decided, then they could put in more.
I think in a few years, you know, if we see, hey, nobody, nobody's voting at this location or there are only six people voting at this location, then it may, it may be time to, you know, to do away with that location. But to say, oh, well, nope, we're just gonna go from that thirty-eight down to eight. These two are never gonna let me get away with that and I wouldn't want to.
How many polling places do we have in the past?
We've gone, so basically, we've gone from like fifty-two down to thirty-eight.
So it's the same number then?
No. No, we've reduced a few. Basically, what we did was we got out of the schools in Michigan City.
Good idea.
Yep, and and uh where we saw that, where I saw where there would be maybe um a a vote center within a mile or two, we don't need that.
Right.
So, so we did away with a few of those. This is gonna be, this is gonna be a a good savings to Laporte County. And it's going to, I I'm telling you, it's gonna increase voter turnout. We turn so many people out and we say, no, you're, you have to go vote at this location. And they don't go.
I've seen it, yeah.
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 So.
I'd say, uh somebody's been involved in county politics for a long time, I'd say it's about time. Because we've been talking about this. And like you said, it has to be unanimous between the Democrats and Republicans, and that just hasn't happened in the past.
It did this time.
But it's it's getting done. I would make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Now, the next thing you need the next thing you need to work on is to do away with this where you have to declare your party in the primary. There's people that will not vote because I don't wanna have to go there and declare my party.
Commissioner Mrazinsky, would you like me to explain why we have primary elections right now?
I know, I know why, but that don't mean it can't change.
That that's legislative, I believe.
Uh huh.
That is for each party to elect their candidates. So that's, that's above my pay grade.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
And you make more than me.
Thank you. I I think, I think uh, uh Mr. Peszek, I think we're gonna have to uh, it'd be appropriate to actually approve the resolution itself. Um, yeah, and ca- can we approve it by title only? That'd be fine.
Sir, uh or Com- Commissioner, I think we could read it just to be.
Alright, I would move to approve by type, uh to approve the resolution approving the designation of Laporte County as a vote center county uh by ti- and read by title only.
Okay. I would second your vote.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye. Thank you.
Will need one on that or? One vote?
Just a resolution.
It's a res- it's a resolution. I don't think we need to have roll call for a resolution, so.
So, and our last is consider auction for scrap material for Highway Department.
Didn't read it by title only, did it?
Um.
Excuse me, uh there is a point of order. Just to be clear, maybe we should read the entire resolution.
No, no.
No, because that would.
He didn't read it by title.
No.
He read the title.
He read the title.
Yeah, you're actually correct. I said read it, read by title. I did say the title, but did I need to say it a second time?
No, you did not.
Yes.
You did. It's a resolution approving the designation of Laporte County as a voter center county. Alright, thank you.
Okay.
So moving on, consider auction for scrap material in Highway Department.
So there was some question by Councilman Yagelski. Um do we wanna table this for another meeting or?
So I just wanted to have a discussion on it and and it was a really good point. What we did was um Highway Department Director went out and she got three bids. Um the issue that we have is that it's a mixed load of scrap and that there, if we were to be able to separate the different scrap into different piles, we might yield more money from those piles. And so I think that there's another part to this. And um if we were to go ahead and give the Highway Department a chance to kind of just separate those piles out first, then ultimately, we always do run short on roads and and the paving and the and the chip and seal. And trying to yield the most money that we can out of these piles really is the best thing for that department because it just gives us the the flexibility of doing more roads later on. So if we can have a motion to table this until we're able to get that done.
Motion to table.
Yeah, I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I have been talking with Mr. Parks and Mr. Yagelski both about this. And you want to do the cars separate, the old police cars?
We are.
They have to be, all the striping and decals have to come off at first. Uh Mr. Yagelski was gonna send somebody out there today to look at them. Um.
At the sheriff's cars? I think they're still at the sheriff's garage.
Yeah, they're behind the sheriff's garage. They were, he was gonna look at it for a guy that was going to uh be able to do that with his power washer. Cool, that could save us a lot of bucks.
And we actually have some quotes on that as well, and then we will take that into account. And then we could discuss it when we bring it back off the table at a future meeting.
Alright, thank you.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Meeting over. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.